Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, December 5th, 2018. We are in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square in Salem, Oregon. We begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance and invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we were just reminded that today is the funeral of a former president, George H.W. Bush, and it might be appropriate for us to do just a moment of silence in honor of him, his presidency, and the services that are going on today. So, just one moment of silence. So, we begin our meeting with public comment, and we almost never have people come for public comment, and today we have six people signed up, so this is great. Shellaswa Cryer, and I do, do I am I saying your name right?
Accent on first syllable, like a C-.
Shellaswa, okay. I listen really hard when you say it, but I am not perfect at this. All right. Shellaswa Cryer, if you would come and lead off the comment. Yeah, over here, the camera will pick you up better. We reserve this if there are PowerPoint presentations. Still not used to microphones. So, good morning, my name is Shellaswa Cryer. I am a resident of Salem, and I just really wanted to come this morning, one, to congratulate Commissioner Cameron, because I don't have your personal phone number to call you, and congratulate you on your reelection as county commissioner. And I really just wanted to express my appreciation for kind of the evolution of your recognition over the course of the campaign, of the priorities of the people of Marion County, and that you articulated. So, some of these come from your, from the Woodburn Independent and the State Journal, that you talked about your goals being to bring more affordable housing and jobs and resources. Also, working on the Aurora Airport to its fullest potential, but that was specific to North Marion County, and economic development, focusing on agriculture, which you already know, and know is very important to me, as well as, you know, the greater larger Marion County community. And you also talked a lot about the challenges and needs of the county, and the area of public safety, homelessness, mental health, and addiction, and the impact that those are doing. And you talked about keeping our neighborhoods and rural areas safe and livable for everyone, as well as traffic safety improvements were one of the examples that you gave. Collaboration on homelessness, and those related issues of mental health and addiction services, and you talked about environmental quality, specifically managing water, recycling, and addressing the incinerator. You mentioned the Third Bridge as well, and I know that Kathy Clark, I've talked to her a lot about, you know, the Third Bridge and working with the city council here in Salem. And managing economic growth, which you said included finding housing for workers and addressing homelessness. And so, I just wanted to let you know that even though the campaign is over, myself as a constituent and community member, you know, are here to work with you and all of the members on the county board of commissioners to help address these issues, along with other members of the community. And you did talk a lot sometimes about, you know, including voices and listening, and so, just will be here to work with you and to make those things happen. You were able to, and I spoke of this to other people, come to every single forum that both of us were invited to, except one. And that was unfortunately, I have no idea why you missed it, and I hope that things were okay for you on that particular day. But unfortunately, the one you missed was the only forum that was sponsored by people of color. That was PCUN, the Farm Workers Union, and two organizations that represent the Asian Pacific Islander community. And so, since unfortunately you missed that particular forum, but I hope that you will be very open to hearing from those voices and addressing those concerns, all at the commission generally, you know, as we go forward. And one of those concerns that didn't make it into large talks or speeches that was mentioned, was that Marion County does not have a voter's pamphlet in Spanish, and so those were some of the concerns that were mentioned to me, and maybe those are some things we can also look to work for here in the next year, the coming term. So, thank you all so much for all of the work. Thank you, Commissioner Cameron. Commissioner Carlson will really appreciate your service. Commissioner Brentano, I don't know you very well, but look forward to working with you in the future as well. Thank you. Thank you.
No, I just want to say thank you for being here this morning and continuing to work on important things for all the citizens of Marion County. Appreciate it.
All right, next person that signed up is Angelina Lockhart. Hi. If you would state your name for the record, too, thank you.
Yes, my name is Angelina Lockhart, and like Shellaswa, I'd like to congratulate you, Kevin, on your victory. And I wanted to talk about some of the things that Shellaswa brought up, the issues of public safety, and you said your number one priority was to, was for public safety concerns with homelessness, mental health, and addiction are impacting public safety. And that, the way that you put it, "public safety improvements, homelessness, mental health, and addiction are impacting public safety, we'll need to make sure all resources are being used efficiently to keep our neighborhoods and rural areas safe and livable for all." And this sounds like, to me, because I was formerly homeless, and have my own mental health issues and all that kind of stuff, it sounds like you were saying to keep things safe by excluding the most vulnerable groups, and you seem to blame for public safety issues. We have instead of being affected by them, too. And that's mostly because of the language. I know it's not your heart, but language is changing in this community, and especially with the homeless population rising because of the lack of affordable housing, language is definitely becoming more of a priority. And we can't fix the housing issue just by building more affordable housing, we do have to give subsidies. Most of the people that are unhoused only need help with the move-in costs and maybe first month's rent, and then they're fine. But just offering them housing and no way to get into that won't actually help anyone. And also, on finding ways to provide mental health and addiction services to the unhoused, the only way to do that effectively is to house first. Utah is a very big example of a way to house the homeless and fix their mental health and addiction issues. If you house them, you can take care of everything else because the stress level goes way down. But if you don't do that, the chances of them leading a healthy productive life is greatly diminished. And also, the Third Bridge that you are in favor of would waste valuable dollars that could be going towards helping the unhoused, because study after study shows that adding more lanes doesn't ease congestion, especially with the environment and global warming which is happening. We need to move away from driving and more towards public safety. We need a public transportation system that allows us to use it on the weekends, and allows people to use it more frequently instead of trying to add more cars to downtown, which would not ease congestion at all. But that's what I wanted to say, and thank you for your time, and again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Fung.
Well, good morning, commissioners, good morning, guests. I'm not really a politician, so if I'm coming across a little rough around the edges, it's because it's, I'm rough around the edges. I wanted to say special hello to Commissioner Carlson. The last time that I made public testimony related to our housing crisis was on the 7th of February in 2017, when I participated in public comments at the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Initiative Task Force. So, it's good to see you again, Commissioner.
See you, too.
And by the way, I appreciate all your questions and comments to me at that meeting. And so, the reason why I'm here today, this morning, is because there is a program in the state of Oregon, and it's called the Home Rescue Program. I will leave copies of this for anybody who wants to see this, but essentially, the Home Rescue Program is an Obama administration program funded by TARP money, and it was designed to direct federal housing funds to the hardest-hit homeowners in all 50 states from the Great Recession. This program started in 2010, and Oregon, being one of the states that was hit pretty hard by the recession, was one of the first states to receive this type of funding. Now, to date, Oregon has dispersed about $248 million of funds, and I think most of the people in this room would agree that that's a fair amount of cash, okay? And so, the good news about this program is that while the majority of states that participated in this program, and I believe all 50 states signed up, while these states sunsetted their program, probably starting in 2016, believe it or not, the federal government found more money, and because the state of Oregon Housing Services still had the infrastructure intact to distribute funds, first of all, of course, they have to qualify, the homeowners, they have to meet a certain criteria, but since the state of Oregon had the infrastructure to deliver these funds and comply with all federal regulations for accounting, Oregon received approximately $95 million in the summer of 2016. And by the way, I've given this presentation most recently to the NAACP chapter in Salem Kaiser, in fact, that was Monday, and we have all the slides from the websites to verify the figures that I'm giving you at this moment. So, the good news, and I think there's some really good news here, because I know the housing crisis is multifaceted, and it's really a tough, tough issue for all of us. The good news is that as of, what time is it? Oh, okay, so it's about 9:14 Pacific Time. As of 12:00 noon Pacific Time, the website, which is the port hole for all applications, is open and accepting applications. So, in approximately 2 hours and 45 minutes, if you are a homeowner, or know of a homeowner who is in distress, in other words, may be behind on their mortgage, may be behind on their property taxes, may have taken out a home equity line of credit, and because of that is in a difficult situation with regard to how much equity they have, excuse me, how much equity they have, they can sign up, it's available to all Oregonians, and then follow the template, and fill those forms out, and submit the documentation. Now, in Marion County, the provider for this service is NedCor, which is just down the street here on Union Street, you can practically walk there, okay? And I can tell you, since I know some of the staff there, that they are absolutely excellent as advocates. So, if you walk through the door, you don't know what to do, they will be glad to help you out. Furthermore, since we had this conversation about multilingualism, all their documentation is in Spanish. And in addition, their intake person speaks excellent Spanish, her name is Cindy Ruiz, and I think she's just wonderful. So, pivoting from that, if I may, because I work a fair amount with stakeholders in the Portland metro region, if the people that you know who may want to access these services in the Portland metro reason, region, excuse me, that would be Hacienda CDC, they have a website, and it's pretty user-friendly. So, anyway, I know I've taken up a lot of your time, and thank you for that, so I'll close real quickly by saying that I am a user of social media, Facebook, LinkedIn, Pinterest, and so forth, and I believe it's an excellent tool for advocacy and for public outreach. So, this morning before I'm here, I'm a friend of all of you today, I posted this on my LinkedIn account with links to the state resources so that anybody on the internet could access this information. Of course, I made two caveats. Number one, you need to be a resident in the state of Oregon to apply, because LinkedIn, as you know, is for everybody in all 50 states and actually all over the world. And the second thing, which I think is really important to underscore as I conclude, is that I want to confirm that I am a volunteer community advocate. I am not paid by any public entity or any private enterprise. Housing is an important issue for me personally and professionally, and if I may link this to the conversation I shared with you, Commissioner Carlson, back at the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Initiative meeting, where I mentioned a single parent who, because she was laid off, she was using Airbnb to help get additional income to keep her house in Portland, okay? And then, at the time, the city of Salem was trying to decide how to regulate Airbnb and if they were going to accept them as a legitimate enterprise within the city limits. I can tell you that she has since moved out of the state. I wish I had known about the Home Rescue Program back when I last saw you, because she would have qualified. We would have been able to save her house, maintain the housing for her and her two children, and if I may add, this woman is a wonderful advocate for her community. So, I believe that we lost a valuable Oregonian, and my goal here in this outreach to all of you is to make sure that we do not lose any other valuable Oregon families, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Great information.
Are there any questions?
Questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Smith.
Good morning. You must be counting the days.
I am not, to be honest.
Really?
Yeah. Only in the sense that I'm trying to pack as much as I can in each one of them, so.
Yes. Good morning, my name is Susan Smith, and I am a resident of Ward 2 in Salem. I wanted to spend just a moment today reflecting on county priorities. Shellaswa mentioned the very long list that Commissioner Cameron already has on his plate, and one of the things that I wanted to do is just add to that plate, just to make it a little more crowded. Over the weekend, I had the honor of going down and presiding over my nephew's wedding in Camarillo, California. And driving from the Los Angeles Airport to Camarillo, I had an occasion to go through the Woolly'sley Fire Area. And coming back along the coast through Malibu, I got to see the Malibu Fire Area as well. What is very clear, although it perhaps wasn't to the resident of the White House, is that those fires had absolutely nothing to do with forest management. There was nothing, no forest to be managed there. But what they have to do with is the incredible drought that has taken hold not only of California, but of the rest of the western United States. And I've spent time down in the Klamath Basin recently, talking to people down there about the problems they have. There is, and I think Commissioner Cameron has acknowledged it, a change in the climate. It is anthropocentric, anthropogenic, it is anthropocentric and anthropogenic. It is basically caused by us doing things that we know will kill the planet, and doing them as quickly as we can. One of the things that struck me is that Marion County, when the administration issued on Black Friday the National Climate Assessment, when we got the IPCC report out in October, what became really painfully clear is that this is a time for all hands on deck, and that includes Marion County. Marion County is going to have to fundamentally rethink what it is doing, and with a lens that looks at climate change as a reality, and reducing our carbon footprint as an imperative. It's essential. It's critical for our children, and our children's children. And I know all of you are grandparents, and you want those children to grow up in a world that somehow resembles the beautiful world that we have grown up in. So, Marion County needs a climate action plan, and even more than that, Marion County needs to prepare for the consequences of what's happening in our sister state of California. Already, I've talked to homeless people who say that we're getting refugees from California who are homeless, and that is, that is, of course, homeless people, but there will be many, many more climate refugees that come to us from California. And we're going to have to think about how we're going to house them. They're also going to come up to the valley, and the agricultural land in California is going to be less productive over time. And the absolutely key breadbasket of the United States is going to be the Willamette Valley, which means the protection of good farmland in Marion County has to be at a premium, because it's going to feed the United States, and it's going to feed a much larger population. I'm not going to give you facts and figures, I'd be happy to provide them, I'd be happy to help with an effort to create a climate action plan that made sense. I know that it has been hard for you to come to the realization that climate change is real, and that it is imperative to address, but that's now the case. We now have all of the evidence that we need, and wildfires burning are just the beginning. So, please put that on the very crowded plate that you already have. Thanks so much.
My name is Laura Doarty, I live here in Salem, and I want to thank Shellaswa and Bill for their campaigns, which gave our ability to give voice to a very deep and visionary, deeply compassionate and visionary sense of what public policy means and what it can do. And I, you know, as Shellaswa, you know, talked to you, I hope you will, will also act in that sense of compassion and vision in creating and maintaining policies for Marion County. I want to, Susan Smith just basically said much better than I could what I wanted to say, because I am very, very concerned about climate change, and there are many areas in which Marion County policy can affect our ability to, you know, be, to contend with climate change in good and positive ways, and, you know, try to stop the worst of it from happening. And there are many ways, as she said, in which Marion County will be affected by climate change, in terms of water, drought, you know, agriculture, that I really hope that you all will take the time to study and understand this issue. It is critical for our survival as people, as a society, you know, to have a good way to go forward. I hope you will really, really reconsider your ideas about climate and pull Marion County into a proactive position in developing policy around this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lowell Wetzel. Sorry, I didn't, I missed the Doarty part, it's in your email, it was just hard to read. Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Lowell Wetzel. Typically, I wouldn't be able to show up at a meeting like this, because, you know, I'm working, and that's why you tend not to get too much public comment, because, you know, of the stark reality that, you know, people have to work. You know, one of, one of the issues that, you know, I grew up, and we were homeless a number of times, you know, I spent two years in high school living in a garage, and, you know, I know people think, oh, well, they're not working hard enough, or, you know, they're lazy, or they're uneducated. But, you know, so, look at the current minimum wage, it's $10.75 an hour, which, you know, for an affordable apartment, for a person living on minimum wage, that would be $465 a month maximum. The current rent in Salem is about $1,200 a month, which, to make that affordable, you would need to earn $27.69 an hour. So, you know, the definition of affordable needs to be based on the minimum wage. If we're going to set the minimum wage at such a low rate that you have to work three jobs or more just to be able to live in an apartment, you need to set the housing to that level as well. So, I hope that we can encourage you to set affordable housing at the rate of the minimum wage. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that's everyone who signed up. Is that good? Yes. All right, yes. Please, we want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak who came to do that. And please give me your name, since you're not on the sign-up sheet.
Hello, my name is Nassim Rakha, N-A-S-E-E-M, Rakha, R-A-K-H-A. I live in Silverton, Oregon. And I used to come to your meetings because it was part of my job. Every once in a while, I would be here, I was a reporter for Public Radio, and I'm an occasional commentator for Oregon Live and and the Oregonian and Oftinum OPB. And so my focus of my comments today are regarding some of your goals, which I find to be well-stated on the first page of your website, which is to provide leadership and promote citizen empowerment, to enhance the health, safety, and livability of our communities, and to promote robust public engagement, and to collaborate with residents. All three wonderful and laudable goals. But as you just heard from one of your people who just testified, the time and time of your meetings, 9:00 AM on a weekday, makes it very difficult for you to hear from those very citizens you want to engage and empower. And so that's an obvious thing, and I looked at other counties, and you're not unusual. Daytime meetings are the norm, but that doesn't mean that you can't stand out and you can't find a way to reach out for, to that public. I know that you have public hearings on specific issues. I know that today you're going to reassign a public hearing for later on in this month, December 19th, kind of a reexamination of a public hearing you held in October because you didn't get any public comment. So I wanted to address that with suggestion. But before I address that, I also want to suggest that when I went to your website, I think that one of the first things that would help people engage with you is to find, to see right there with your goals, this is when we meet, and this is the time we meet. In order to find when you have your regular meetings, I had to go through to your calendar and then search through your calendar and see, oh, apparently they meet every Wednesday at 9:00 AM. That's not easy enough. That's not intuitive enough. Make it more accessible. The other thing that I saw when I was going through your website is that in order for me to find out what you've done in the past, what decisions have you made in the past, I went to your meetings and I saw agendas listed, and I saw minutes listed, but the minutes ended in July. There is nothing past that, and that's not acceptable if you want to engage the public. They need to know what you have been doing. They're not going to be sitting at home breathlessly watching CCTV. And then I also noticed that when I went to your agenda today, you were going to talk about the Legislative Assembly 18001, but there was no link to that. I had to Google it in order to find that and find out what exactly do you want to talk about at this public hearing you want to hold in December. And so again, it's not intuitive, it's not accessible, it doesn't engage public at the level your goals describe. And finally, my one suggestion to you that I don't think is too onerous is that once a month, you have an evening meeting. Once a month, that instead of 9:00 AM on a Wednesday, it's 7:00 PM on a Wednesday. And it is just, it is on the website everywhere, that this is also an opportunity for people who can't make it at 9:00 AM to come here. And maybe we even have childcare available. So if you want to live up to those goals that are so well-articulated on your webpage, I suggest that you creatively think about ways. This is just some things off the top of my head at 6:00 in the morning when I'm not doing my greatest thinking, but I bet you could come up with something better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who didn't sign up?
I just have one comment if I could, just for Lori and...
I have several comments.
Oh, Lori and Suzy's sake on climate change. I just did an interview on KYKN. You can find it, and I think I'd like you to hear it, and our policy might make a lot more sense to you. I hope it'd be enlightening to you.
Well, I, I'm sorry, we can't do back and forth right now, but I do want to say, first of all, thank you all for coming. Secondly, your timing is very good because we just had a planning retreat last week, was it, on Thursday? And we do this annually. We have a document that is still in draft form, but I was, I talked to Troy Bryn Nelson, who came over from the Salem Reporter, and he's interested in seeing it. We do this every year, and it's a 12-page document that has all of our goals and objectives for the upcoming year. And essentially, what we do is we go through it and say, okay, what things that we said we were going to do last year, did we make headway on? What things kind of got, fell through the cracks? What things are kind of in between? And so we did that, and then adding new material to it, given, you know, what we've experienced in the last year. And so I just, I don't want to take a whole lot of additional time, but just to, for your interest, we do, first of all, I wasn't going to mention it, but we do have a whole section on communications, and it is a strong priority for this board. We do not have enough staff in our board office to adequately do the communications types of things that you're talking about. We're completely aware of that. I brought up the minutes issue because actually last week I was looking for something, and the minutes went back and stopped at June, and I actually called Kristy. She's been training Brenda, you know, I mean, but she said, I'm the one that edit, that like proofs the minutes before they go to everybody else. I said, listen, I've got a month and a week, and you know, and she said she's on it. But that is unacceptable, and we really do need to get on it. So I completely agree with you. We do, and we, and I think we've set a goal to do more of them, town hall meetings. We had a wonderful town hall meeting in East Salem where we put it on next door, and we had well over 100 people that attended that town hall out at Shemekada and talked about all the things that we were doing out there. It was fantastic. And we also had lined up, and this took weeks of planning, so it's not something you just kind of slammed together, but to do the kind of outreach you're talking about effectively, rather than just kind of waiting for people who happen to come, because we could have an evening meeting once a month. I'm not saying that's not a good goal, but if nobody shows up to that evening meeting to get public comment, you know, then we're asking all of the staff to stay late and flex their schedules and that type of thing to be here. And not saying that couldn't be done, but it's just something that we haven't done in the past and would have to work out. But the East Salem meeting, we had the appropriate staff there, and so every time a question came up, like this road, or this stoplight, or this sewer pipe, or whatever, we had the right people there to be able to talk about what, what the county was doing, where it was on the priority list, when it would happen. So we're actually looking at doing those in North County and East Salem and the third areas.
And the canyon.
And the canyon, right.
Right.
Right, to continue those in a more probably structured, regular way. The area around public safety and mental health, I just wanted to talk about because Commissioner Cameron is taking on the role as the Chair of the Public Safety Coordinating Council. He's been co-chairing that with me this year, and I've been doing it, I can't remember, for four or five years since Commissioner Milne left. And we do have several significant goals on that. One of them is the funding that comes from the legislature that allows us to do our entire reentry program, which, by the way, the governor's budget is, there's a big gap there, so we're going to have an uphill climb. Again, that happens every session, every long session, and we've been very successful. Our sheriff, district attorney, public safety partners that we have work hard to get that funding so that we can continue those services. Jason Myers, who's our sheriff, is also co-chairing the Behavioral Health Justice Reinvestment Task Force, and they will have some policy recommendations to the legislature on that integration of behavioral health and public safety. But Marion County has been in the forefront of that for the last number of years, probably more than a decade. We have the Psychiatric Crisis Center that is a model for the state. Most counties don't have that. It's been around for 23 years, a 24/7 drop-in center for people who are in crisis. We just had a discussion about trying to replace that building and finding the funding to do that because it's a modular building that's, I think, owned by Salem Health, and that's their property, but I think the county's going to step up and...
Court teams.
Right. Well, yeah. And then the law enforcement assisted diversion, which came, it was a priority of the Middle Ammit Homeless Initiative. We just wrote two grants that we approved. We got $1.3 million, so that's funded, and we're going to have up to five navigators over the next three years to be able to do street outreach with people who are generally homeless, addicted, and involved in kind of these quality-of-life crimes, which, you know, urinating in public, trespass, the types of things that are actually a function of being homeless that become crimes and get people in the system. And so we're trying to prevent that, and we've had a, you know, a real successful experience with our first navigator, and we're actually, we've put money in the county budget, and then we've got these grants to add additional navigators. With regard to homelessness also, Colm Willis is going to be point on that. We've, we're participating in the Steering Committee with the Council of Governments. We have a lengthy strategic plan that came out of that. In fact, when that February meeting where we approved that strategic plan, it was 20-plus pages of strategies, and so each jurisdiction is kind of working through that. But on our list, the Sobering Center is preeminent. We want to get that over the goal line. The Housing First was actually, and talked about, the Salt Lake City model was studied as part of that initiative. And one of the things that's, which we do in Marion County through our housing authorities, but the problem is the supply. I mean, the Housing First works if you have a good supply of housing, but what are people going to do while they're waiting for that housing to be built? And Cornerstone is a fabulous development, and it, I, we had the gaps analysis. I think it's 7,000 units that we would need to be caught up. So, you know, we do like 100 or something. It's just a drop in the bucket. We have such a huge need. So while I agree with you, we need to do Housing First, we also need to do things like LEED, where we're putting people more in temporary housing while we're waiting for that housing supply to be built. And we do have that through the Psychiatric Crisis Center, respite housing, supportive housing, and we need a lot more of that. I'll just say that. Kevin has been really an advocate for workforce housing, and I think that housing, you can just create housing for people and they, and they can, because they're independent, they're not, they don't have those significant mental health issues, and that's something I was hoping that you would talk about for just a minute, your work on that. And then what I'll, and again, we didn't intend to have this on our agenda, but I just, since you're here, I just want to make sure that you're aware of the multiplicity of priorities that we've been working on and policy priorities. And when we get this document, I, it's, I'm looking at it on the G Drive, and it's still in a redline format, so as soon as everybody agrees on the language that we came up with after that Thursday meeting, we will get it out to you so that you can review it. But I do want to say on the environment, Marion County has also been a leader. Our Public Works Department's, we're working on best management practices that support the environment, the spraying issue, all the things that they do around ditches and stormwater and that type of thing 16 years ago when I came here. I mean, they're not just starting to do that. Salem was a little bit ahead of us, but, but we were right behind in that second wave. The Waste-to-Energy Facility, we're having a work session with the City of Salem next, no, it's a week from Monday, right? The 17th. And would invite you all to participate in that. I think there's a, I mean, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there in terms of the Waste-to-Energy Facility, and I think we need to clarify what's, what's real and what's conjecture in that conversation, and this work session will be an opportunity for us to kind of hear from the sources, what is going on? What are the levels of particulates and so on that come out of the Waste-to-Energy Facility? What is carbon versus methane? I mean, because there are certainly pros and cons to landfilling versus the Waste-to-Energy Facility that we have. And it's interesting because most of Europe is doing the Waste-to-Energy Facility type of model. It's more rare in the United States, and it's because we have such vast expanses of land and we can landfill. But if you want to protect farmland, building another landfill in Marion County is not at least where I would want to go as a commissioner. So I think helping understand the trade-offs that you have in these two policy directions, and I'm not suggesting, because nobody here talked about that, I'm just inferring from some comments that that might be an issue, because that is one of the big policy pieces that we do that affects the environment. And Sam already talked about forest management, and he has been really the point on that, and it's a significant issue for us. And the protection of farmland, we have passed resolution after resolution about protecting farmland. Our planning guidelines are all around that, so we have been strong advocates for that.
Interesting interrupting a little, like the solar issue.
I just thought of that, right. Yeah, the fact that we put a moratorium on solar farms, which seems like a really worthy cause, but when you hear about how it's impacting our farmland, again, there are, there are trade-offs to that, and to just say 12 acres is great and put it anywhere you want. I think we saw what the impacts were of that and put a stop to it until we can get some better regulations on that. So I could go on and talk about a whole lot more, but I will close with this, but just say, you know, I'd appreciate you taking a look at the policy document that we've come up with, and we do want to have opportunities to converse with. I've been a firm believer that divergent issues makes for better policy. If you only listen to the people that agree with you, you're not going to have the policy that, that really represents everyone in Marion County. And so that's why I so much appreciate your advocacy, your engagement, the fact that you're here today, and your passion for what you believe in, and recognize that there are people on the other end that are just as passionate as you. And so we have to find the best balance that works the best for the citizens of Marion County, but we do want to hear everyone's perspective in doing that.
I just want to make one comment about the housing issue. Monday, I was up at the Oregon Leadership Summit, and the governor spoke, and she's got a housing policy that we, we just, in fact, Lisa's sitting here today, we were just looking at it. We're 155,000 units behind in the state of Oregon, and the goal for the business, the Oregon Business Plan is to build 30,000 a year, and this year, we're going to build about 21,000 units in the state of Oregon. So this isn't a Marion County alone issue. This is, this is a statewide west coast issue. And one of the things we're working on is to set our goals, to look back and see how many units we're doing, and I think Commissioner just mentioned, we're like 7,000 units behind. We're going to validate that, but put a group together. We've got our Marion County Housing Authority, Candace, and others, the governor's office, James LaBarre, putting a group together to really look at not only just low-income housing, but all housing. Because I think, I believe that if we could meet those, get back, if you built in the state 30,000 units a year, it would take us 20 years to make up that gap. That's a lot, and we are building 21,000 right now. So we've got some challenges ahead of us, and we're going to put a group of people here locally to see what we can do to, with the City of Salem and ourselves, and maybe it's our Public Works or whatever, to try to get to those units. And that will help tremendously, not only on the low-income side, but the workforce side. It's units that we need to get done, so appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to say was, we're working on, on public safety issue, the pre-trial issue on our jail, to try to make sure that people who, who are, you know, under the judge's opinion, that are able to be supervised locally and not sit in jail while they're waiting for trial, et cetera. So there's a lot of unique programs we're working on in Marion County that the state continues to look at. And I would say, one of the real critical things is, is if you're, you're here, it's really, we really appreciate your input here, but also going over to the state and advocating for the budgets that need to happen, as Commissioner Carlson said. You start cutting the corrections budget, and we are going to be in, in very, very dire straits with the people who we have been working with that are coming out of DOC and having their lives turned around through the reentry programs and things that we've been able to do here, changing one life at a time as well as improving public safety for people. So, so those numbers are really important over there with the, with the justice reinvestment program. I think that we're, just to maintain the status quo, we're looking at like a $44 million number, and I know the governor's budget came out a lot lower than that. So I really appreciate everybody being here, and your input is, is important. So thank you.
If I could, one other. Just because I haven't heard you mention it, and I, I keep saying it's our number one issue, but then no one mentions it, but it is, and it's the preservation, protection of water supplies to Marion County, whether it be Detroit dam and the issues there, or allocations out of the San Em, and we're going to be vigilant in, you know, for farming and for our cities. To have anything that threatens that has to be our number one priority, and I just want you to know we're doing all we can.
Okay, well, thank you again very much. We have a presentation on our Veteran Services Program. This is actually the first presentation that we've had as a board, a board session, and thank you, Linda, for your patience in listening to this public comment. Barb Young is going, are you starting us out?
Yep, I'll start out this morning. For the record, Barb Young, Government Relations Manager for Marion County, and my co-presenter is...
Linda Strike from, oops, Linda Strike from Argers Project.
Today, we wanted to walk you through how our Veteran Services Office Program is going. I'm going to start out with a little bit of the chronology of how we got here today, and then Linda will take over in how the program is rolling out and how it's, how it's going with all, with our services. Marion County's been kind of in a unique position. There's, there are veteran service officers in every county throughout the state, but we had a unique partnership with the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs where they provided those services for Marion County since probably the 1980s. So the role and mission of the Department of Veterans Affairs is evolving, and they came and spoke with the commissioners in May of 2017, where they asked the commissioners, would you be willing... the commissioners in May of 2017, where they asked the commissioners, would you be willing to take on those specific services for Marion County? So after a few meetings and understanding the, the realm of those services, the commissioners agreed to that. And also along with that comes a large grant to the county. So that was able to help kick off and launch our veteran services program. So in September of 2017, we got our notification that we would receive 162,000 basically to start our program. With that, we began our request for proposal process to go out and find some folks who, who could help us provide those services. We could contract for those services. And our, our agency that, that we awarded that contract to was Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency. So January 1st, the program started up. It's, it's been a ramp up process. Mid Willamette Valley was able to hire one of two veteran service officers by January 1st, and the administrative assistant. And then our agreement with Department of Veterans Affairs is they do all of the training of that staff for us. Then by March, we were able to get that second veteran service officer on board. There's a lengthy training process. It's almost a full year for those veteran service officers. And so we're, we're still, Linda will get into that a little bit about how our, our officers are doing. So also, we did a memorandum of understanding with the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs, because we wanted to be really clear on what our role was, what their role was, and how do we partner and make sure that we're successful with this program. Then June 1st, our veteran service officers were trained up enough that we could actually launch our own and stand up our own veteran services office. And they began seeing clients on, on their own, but with the oversight of ODVA, ensuring that their applications and processes were done correctly. So anyway, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Linda to kind of get into the details of the program.
Thank you. So, excuse me, part of our purpose in applying for this piece is that we already have a variety of veteran housing programs. And so we kind of have become known as the stop for veterans. And so this just made a lot of sense. And it's been working out really well. We had the grand opening of the services in our building on Commercial Street in June. And since that time, our, we've had a really, a lot of people coming through our doors. And the reports are showing, our last quarterly report, we did 218 in-office interviews and 13 out-of-office interviews. And then the other piece that I think is really important is the warm handoff between housing programs and veteran service programs. So we are handing off in the last quarter, 21 veterans from housing programs to veteran service officers. And they, in return, also did a warm handoff of seven veterans to our housing programs. And so that's been a really successful element. And they had 776 walk-ins on their walk-in Wednesday during that quarter. I have a handout that I'll leave for you. They've been in the senior and boomer news, almost a two-page article, which is pretty awesome. And since the opening, our original hire for veteran service officer, James Riddle, has now, is fully accredited. He passed his test. The second veteran service officer will be eligible for his test after the first of the year. And he took his practice test and passed with 97%. So we expect it won't be a problem at all. And then we also did our suicide prevention event in September. As part of that, we created a postcard that has our local resources for veterans. So there's a national hotline, and they have the VA CBOC here that they can access. But these are resources aside from your traditional VA medical. And so that was part of our campaign. Then the other thing is, we had a local teen who did a t-shirt design for us. And I toyed with the idea of wearing this today, but I couldn't figure out what I would put on the bottom half. So here we are. So she did the design, and then we have been distributing these to veterans. On the back is the veteran crisis line as well. And then on the shirt sleeve is our VSO logo. And we had a barbecue event on September 22nd, and these were at that event. And then, like I said, we've been taking them to other veteran outreach events. And they've been very well received. The color was chosen by a variety of veterans who gave input. They chose this color primarily because they figured that it would be both male, female would be okay with that. But their primary reason was that if we went with blue, or green, or something, that there would be competition between the different branches of the military. So that was a driving force. And then I also brought copies of our brochure that we have now halfway through our second run-on. And that just tells you a lot of outreach events that the officers are going to, that are around the state. They've been to several different trainings. And we've had a lot of, not only veterans, but family members who are coming in, spouses that come in for death benefits, and also family who bring in elderly. Our recovery into our community for, back to the veterans for last quarter was $744,844.39. And so those are dollars that should have been coming to veterans that the help of the veteran service officer brought back to those veterans. We had one veteran who had an $80,000 back pay because he should have been getting disability. And that moment when he was told that that was, they had gotten verification of that, he broke down in tears in the office, which meant that then everybody was kind of weepy. And evidence of the fact that the work is really having an impact is not only financial, but also borne out by the fact that we have had people bringing thank you notes or sending thank you notes. We had an individual, a daughter of a veteran who brought hot apple pies. She had just taken them out of the oven. They've dropped off donuts. So people are really grateful for the assistance that they're getting. And like I said, it's changing lives. That individual who had the back pay was really struggling, didn't, his income was not adequate to help him sustain housing, as we've been talking about. And so having that come through has completely changed his life. So we're grateful for the opportunity to do this. It's been just an amazing addition to the comprehensive veteran services in the building, and we appreciate the support.
Thank you very much, Linda. So it was great hearing about all the things that you're doing. Questions or comments?
No.
No, sorry.
Linda, if I could, we've had either complaints or notices that people weren't able to get in, and they weren't being seen unsubstantiated. I don't care. But I was going to be asking, so what are you doing for, you know, outreach? And you really, your whole presentation was about that. My thoughts were, I don't think we've ever had any newspaper or other coverage telling people where in Marion County, this is a new service or transition. And I'd like to ask you to try to, maybe you would anyway, this goes without saying, but try to get that kind of news coverage out there, because it should be a news item concerning Marion County. And, and then the last thought I have, if there's any way that you can use our offices or the county to get, to get that word out, please, please let us know. But I, I want people to know it's available and, and to be used, and then we'll deal with if we even need more staff. And I understand the transition, just getting started adding new people, there can be troubles. But it's up and going, and I want people to use it.
And ODVA did do a press release at the time that the office and the program opened.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Doesn't matter. But maybe it'd be a good time to say, hey, we're, we're up and operating now and revisit it.
Yeah. And so we are being attentive to trying to make sure that we're putting the word out in every forum. And I hear it sounds like something more formal in the newspaper would be appropriate. So we'll make sure we get that done. We also are in the process of creating a button on our agency website that will go directly to veteran service office page. So that will be available as well as a general email. Right now, all the emails are direct to the VSO. So there'll be a general information.
And I'm interrupting, but I'm thinking even newspapers, not just the Statesman, but Staton and Woodburn. And we're actually going to be in Woodburn in just a little bit. So if you could leave some information. I, I know they'll work with you there and love the story opportunity. It'd be great to get out in North County availability of this too.
Absolutely. And I'll follow up with Jolene in our office to help with some of that as well.
Right. I was going to say, yeah, Jolene would be a really good resource for you. And not just newspapers, but social media would be key. And we have been trying to build that. And I, and I know, the other thing I was thinking is that we're going to focus our newsletter this month on giving opportunities. We did that a year ago. So we're, you know, people, people are playing especially charitable during the season and oftentimes want to know where they can help people. So if you have a list too, and I, you probably do, of items that could be used either for Arches or Veterans Program or both, make sure that you get that to us soon, so that we can get that in the newsletter.
I can, I can definitely do that. And I will say that at this time, the veteran service officers are scheduling appointments clear out into January. And so we're trying to figure out how we're going to address that as well, because they have so many people coming through the doors. So.
Well, and that was one of the concerns that I have is, are we getting help from the state in terms of that overflow that we have? Because I'm thinking that we should be. And so that's been a concern of mine that I've raised for the past several weeks here.
Commissioner, last week, we had a meeting with both Mitch Sparks and Sharon Blasey, and visited about what else they could do to help us. They were going to have a staff person, I don't know if they made it down this week or not, but do some additional training on a certain portion of the applications. And then they were going to stay and hang out and do like a job shadow with them and help them work on efficiency. Since they are brand new at their job, they should be averaging about six applications a day, where if you're very seasoned and you know what you're doing, you might in a, in a rush be able to do eight or 10. So he was going to try to look at, how can he help them with their time management? So that was one of the first pieces that we were looking at as well. And then we're going to continue.
Is the second one certified though?
This one is certified from ODVA.
Both of them are now?
No.
No.
This is, this is. Isn't eligible till after the first of the year.
Right, exactly. So until that eligibility happens and it kicks in, I really think we need to be pushing on ODVA to continue providing the, the eligibility, the, they were going to do a hybrid model.
In transition.
I went back to that work session that we had with Cameron Smith and Mitch, and they did that with Polk County for nine months. And with us, they gave us three.
Shut up.
So I just, I think they're really anxious to kind of move on and other things. But I think we need to keep pushing the argument.
Yep.
That we need help, not just training on how to do things faster, but we only have one person that's actually up and running. And it's not something that we can control, because they're not eligible to be certified until after the first of the year. And once they get certified, it's going to take them a little while to, to get up to speed. So
Absolutely.
I think that's a big concern of mine. Just want to lay that out there. And I guess the other, the other thing that I wanted to talk about, and so this is like recognizing you have such limited staff support, but I know at some point, we talked about actually doing outreach into the rural areas of the county, you know, like having days where you might be out, like Sam was talking about in Woodburn or the canyon, or something like that. So that's still on the to-do list, right?
Absolutely. And they do go out if we get a phone call. So because of our housing programs, having a lot of outreach out in those areas, we have a lot of different contacts out there. And so we do, if there's an individual that struggles with transportation or something like that, they do go out and travel to that veteran in a lot of different corners of the county. But our long-term goal is to be able to go to locations on specific days as scheduled. And one thing is that when the state was doing this for Marion County, they had three full-time VSOs working, and we only have two. So we're working on a lot of different creative ideas and solutions and hope that we'll be able to come up with some way to get that happening faster.
Okay. I thought we had two and a supervisor.
Yep. So the VSOs, the accredited VSOs are the only ones that are allowed to do the actual work. The supervisor is me, and I'm the, I do the administrative reporting and all of that, and making sure that these kinds of things happen. But the actual veteran service officer, there's only the two.
And so we're doing an assessment about whether we need to have a third?
The state is recommending it, and that's part of the whole process that we're kind of going through right now. And then everybody believes that's true. We're just, have to figure out how to make it happen. So.
All right. I think the first step is to talk with Barb about it.
We are.
Great. Okay, good. All right. Any other comments, questions?
Well, I will. I just that, until we're up to full speed and know what we can really handle, and I think it's a little premature to be talking about what the staffing level could be. And I want to second the notion that the state hasn't gone through, come through on this transition and making it as seamless as possible. I think, I think Commissioner added just exactly right. They, they passed the program off and said goodbye, and then complained. That's an issue.
How do you really feel about that?
Well, I told you.
Maybe we should send a letter or something like that, too.
Thank you.
Great progress.
All right. Thank you. So now, moving into our agenda, we have a number of items on consent. Who's turn is it this week?
It's me.
Commissioner Brantano? And we just have two action items today.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. On it, in it, under Business Services, approve a broker service agreement between Marion County and Brown and Brown of Oregon for employee benefits and property casualty insurance effective January 1st, 2019. Approve a private stormwater facility maintenance covenant and access agreement between Marion County and the city of Salem for the Marion County Juvenile Services Building. Legal counsel, approve an order for payment of a judgment against Marion County in the amount of $299,675 in the matter of Tratner versus Marion County at all. Public Works, receive notice of hearings officer's decision approving administrative review case 18014 Hill Marital Trust. Approve a funds transfer agreement between Marion County, State of Oregon, Department of Transportation for exchange of federal funds for state funds in the amount of $1,175,000. And the last is approve an amendment to the WAVE broadband franchise agreement, which would extend the term through December 31st, 2019. would extend the term through December 31st, 2019.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on any of the items? All in favor, say aye.
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 That's approved. All right, action. The first one is under Public Works, consider approval of an ordinance amending the Marion County Code, Chapter 6.15, relating to, related to the keeping of chickens and fowl in residential zones, our favorite topic.
Yes.
So we have Joe Fenimore and Scott Norris, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner, for the record, Joe Fenimore.
And Scott Norris from the Office of Legal Counsel.
Back in 2015, Marion County adopted the backyard chicken ordinance to regulate the keeping of hens on residentially its own properties inside urban growth boundaries. The ordinance limited the number of hens that could be kept, required the keeper to meet certain standards such as setbacks, fencing, et cetera. Since the ordinance was adopted, there have been very few, if any, issues with its implementation. Earlier this year, the county received a complaint from a property owner in an acreage residential zone outside the urban growth boundary about his neighbor keeping chickens, and they are allowed to roam the neighborhood. The chickens damaged the property owner's garden and landscaping and became a general nuisance. Code enforcement gets several of these types of complaints a year, but since the AR zone permits farm use, they have no tool to deal with the problem. After discussing the issue at a meeting on October 22nd, the board directed staff to return with proposal to address the issue. Staff proposed that the code be amended in two ways. The first is to apply the existing standards to the single-family residential zone properties outside the urban growth boundary. There's not a lot of them, but there's a few out there that are zoned, single-family residential, they're pretty small in size. So we're amending the ordinance, we thought it would be good to add that in to allow those people to do the same thing as inside the city, the urban growth boundary. The other, second proposal, the second proposed amendment would regulate the keeping of fowl on properties zoned AR by requiring them to be confined to the property. As proposed, the amendment will provide code enforcement with a tool to use for responding to those types of complaints. An ordinance has been prepared for you to consider. You have the options of approving the ordinance as written, approve the ordinance with modifications, or take no action at this time. Staff recommends that you approve the ordinance as prepared. I'll let Scott discuss the process, since this is not an ordinance amending the zone code, so this is a little bit different process.
Okay, right, and I'm just curious, Scott, would we, if we don't do this by emergency today, do we have to wait 90 days till it takes effect? That was my...
That's correct, that since Marion County Code, Chapter 6.15, is not part of the zone code, this would be adopted by the regular procedure, as it is drafted, would be adopted by the regular procedure, which is, this would be the first reading, then we would return in two weeks for a second reading, and then the board could vote on it, and the ordinance would then take effect 90 days thereafter.
Is it not allowed for us to do it by emergency?
You could.
Okay, so why would we make people wait three months in order for us to be able to apply this when we have a constituent waiting for us to do this?
The board could choose to adopt it by the emergency procedure if it wishes. The text of the ordinance would need to be changed slightly to state, for language stating the emergency, but that could be done. And if that is the case, then the board could vote on the ordinance today, and it could take effect immediately.
Okay, do we wanna do that?
Yeah, let's get it done.
Yeah, I'm concerned about, that's a question we should've talked about before it came here, so next time, put that in your...
Any problem with reading by title, or do you just insert the emergency part?
Yeah, the board can choose to read by title only, read by title only once, and then vote on the ordinance.
No, I think if we do it by emergency, we have to do it by title twice.
I'm sorry.
And it needs to say, after the ordinance amending Marion County Code, it says, "and declaring an emergency," that would be the...
Correct, that, and then there's a paragraph that goes in the text stating the emergency.
Okay. Any other questions, does the code enforcement have any, are, does code enforcement care whether we do this in 90 days or right away? You're still, you're working with...
I'm still working on the...
Yeah, would you come up? Laura, I'm sorry to make you do this, but since you're here, why not, right? Because I know this gentleman has been very anxious for us to do something, right?
I'm Laura Pekerek with Marion County Community Resource Unit, Marion County Sheriff's Office and Code Enforcement. Yes, the gentleman, we're still working through the process, we don't have 100% compliance at this point, they have made steps to comply, and I have a couple other cases that this would, this would apply to as well.
So waiting three months probably wouldn't be as great as doing it right away, is that...
I'd prefer not to wait three months.
Okay, great, thank you.
Madam Chair, just, Laura, so we would notify people, though, to let them know that this was passed, and they get a certain amount of time for compliance, right? We're not...
Absolutely, yes.
I think, though, from what I understand, you've been doing a lot of education already, right, and trying to get voluntary compliance?
Yes.
And that has been a challenge.
It has been challenging.
Right, okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Laura?
So just, Madam Chair, just to clarify, the motion is going to be to adopt it by emergency and have the chair read the...
Yeah, we'd read it by title twice first, that's the first motion, and then the second would be to actually adopt it.
So Madam Chair, I'll move that we adopt the ordinance, County Code, Chapter 6.15, under emergency, and have the chair read by title twice. Is that close?
Yeah, just ask for the chair to read it by title only twice.
If that's the motion, I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion for the chair to read this ordinance by title only twice. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that's approved. So the chair will read this by title only twice, and I will insert the additional language, this is an ordinance amending Marion County Code, Chapter 6.15, relating to the keeping of chickens and fowl in residential zones and declaring an emergency. And again, an ordinance amending Marion County Code, Chapter 6.15, relating to the keeping of chickens and fowl in residential zones and declaring an emergency.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we adopt ordinance amending Marion County Code, Chapter 6.15, relating to the keeping of chickens and fowl in residential zones and declaring an emergency.
I can only behave for so long, so could I cluck a second, please?
Yes, you can. I thought we were gonna have the song...
Yeah, you thought you might make it, no.
You don't want me to play that song.
No chicken jokes, all right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance by emergency. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All right, it's approved, thank you. And then the second item, and last item actually, is consider scheduling a public hearing for December 19th, 2018, to consider amendments to the Marion County Urban and Rural Zone Codes. And Joe, you're here, and not Brandon, I'm assuming, right?
Correct, for the record, Joe Fenimore. On August 1st, 2018, the board initiated amendments to the Marion County Zone Codes and directed the planning commission to conduct a public hearing on the amendments proposed by staff to make a recommendation to the board. On October 30th, the planning commission held a public hearing to consider the proposed amendments. The amendments made changes made by the legislature, there were some federal changes, law changes in the floodplain, and then it was some correcting and some errors that we've discovered over the, since the last update. At the public hearing, no parties appeared to testify, and the planning commission voted unanimously recommending the board adopt the amendments. November 26th, at Management Update Meeting, the board considered the scope of the amendments and directed staff to schedule, to have you schedule a public hearing with the suggested hearing date of December 19th. You have the option of scheduling the public hearing for December 19th, 2018, schedule a public hearing for a later date, or take no action at this time. Staff recommends the board schedule a public hearing for December 19th.
Madam Chair, I just wanna make a note that that planning commission meeting was held in the evening, correct, Joe?
Correct, they're on 6:30 on Tuesday evenings, as needed.
Right, so there was a chance in the evening for public to make comment on this?
Correct.
Yeah, good.
Right, I was gonna make the same point, and I think it may be confusing to people that aren't familiar with the land use process, and trust me, it took me a while to learn land use as a county commissioner, because it's not, as I say, intuitive really at all. But we have a planning commission on these types of issues, they conduct their hearings in the evening, and then it comes to the board, and we are conducting a second public hearing. We're not moving it to a different day because there wasn't any public participation in that evening meeting. It would need to come to the board, and we can decide whether we have a hearing or not, right?
That is correct.
And we decided we wanted to have a second hearing, just to, and so this is the motion to schedule that hearing date, and then we can actually adopt it on the same day as we have the public hearing, if we don't hear anything contrary to what is being proposed. But I do wanna say, too, and I think, Joe, you mentioned that, but just to underscore it, these are statutory changes that we're just kind of putting into our Marion County Code, many of them technical, none of them controversial from what I saw, right? And we've actually held out some of the ones that would be more substantive, controversial, whatever word you wanna use, for, to do separately. So it's not unusual for us not to get public comment on something when it's just, when it's more housekeeping types of changes. Did I get that right?
That's correct. One correction, though, is the board does have to have a public hearing.
Oh, the board does have to?
The option was whether you wanted the planning commission to have a hearing also.
I see, okay.
With the recommendation, that's what we...
Okay, I remembered we talked about it, all right. So we would've had to have a public hearing anyway, but we opted to ask the planning commission to do it, because they do it in the evening, and we might get more...
Correct.
Right, okay. So that's the story behind the process, for those of you that were confused by that. All right, any questions on the actual setting of the date, or concerns about that, or do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would, I'd make a motion, we do schedule a public hearing for December 19th, 2018, to consider amendments to Marion County Urban and Rural Codes, LA 18001.
And I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to schedule the public hearing date, to consider amendments to the code, and then with regard to the other comment, once we schedule that hearing, the text of those changes will be online with the agenda, correct?
They will be online with your agenda, they will also be on the Public Works Planning website, there'll be a link to them also.
Okay, great. Important to have that link.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, the data's set, thank you. So we have no public hearings today, so that concludes our action items for Wednesday, December 5th. I will read the calendar, the Wednesday, Wednesday calendar of meetings where two or three commissioners will be present between December 5th and December 12th, 2018. We're just concluding our board session here at the Senator Hearing Room on December 5th. At noon today is our monthly Woodburn Marion County meeting at Louisa's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. 7:00 AM tomorrow, December 6th, we'll be attending the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Meeting at the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce on Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. By the way, the topic of that is the Third Bridge, so that will be interesting. At 10:30 tomorrow, Thursday, December 6th, is our monthly Department Head Elected Officials' Board Meeting, officials meeting, it will be held in the Commissioners' Board Room, sorry, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Then at 2:00 Thursday, December 6th, is the Juvenile Department's Holiday Open House that will be held out at the Juvenile Department at 3030 Center Street Northeast here in Salem. At 3:00 Thursday, December 6th, is a work session on dog shelter operations and compliance in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Then Thursday evening at 7:00 is the East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association at Marion County Fire Station Number 1, 300 Corden Road Northeast in Salem, where we will be talking about recycling rules and what constituents in East Salem can do to make sure that they're recycling appropriately. On Monday, December 10th, at 8:30 in the morning, is our monthly, a monthly, weekly calendar review, Silverton Conference Room in the fifth floor, followed by Management Update at 9:00 AM, same place. Tuesday morning, December 11th, at 7:30 is the State and Marion County meeting at the Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third Avenue in Staton. Also on December 11th, Tuesday at 10, is a work session on the ag and municipal water supply issues, that will be in the Commissioners' Board Room, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. And then finally, on Wednesday, December 12th, 9:00 AM, we will be back here in the Senator Hearing Room for our weekly Wednesday board session. You doing all right here?
No, I've been struggling for years, but recently.
All right, so any...
I'm gonna interrupt right off. I said this to you privately, but I wanna say it publicly, what a wonderful event that was last night, how much I enjoyed it, I don't wanna get soppy or anything, but your devotion to Brock, and makes me think of so much more I wish I could do with my own Caroline, kinda brings that together. But I enjoyed the whole night, and I wish they would've gave me more than five minutes, you know I had more stuff.
You took more than five minutes.
Okay, don't, oh, you're gonna keep grabbing now.
But thank you, your words were wonderful, I really appreciate it, it was a wonderful event. I'm sorry, I'm giving you a hard time.
I'm used to that, but go ahead.
No, well, and it was fun, too, because I got a new car, you know that, I had a 2002, so I had the same car for 16 years. It bit the dust, so finally got a new car. And I got this, I won't name it, because we probably shouldn't be promoting anything on screen here, but a particular radio service that came as a trial in my car, and I, at the last minute, decided I was gonna keep it, so I've got the 60's channel that I've been listening to.
Oh, is that nice?
As I've been driving in between meetings and things, and Sweet Caroline came on.
Oh, did it?
Yeah, yesterday, and I always think of you and Caroline when I hear that song, so...
Tammy's got that as my phone.
Yeah, I know that.
I now get to hear it.
Yeah, right. I hear it when I, those few times that I have called your number, so that's neat. So, yeah, it was a wonderful event, I owe a lot to the staff that we have here, and Jan and Laura and others for the work that they put to get the space and beautiful video and just a lovely event, so thank you so much, really.
So we'll probably be saying goodbye for the next three, four weeks?
Yeah, I'm gonna be here for a while, so...
There'll be, you'll tell us when this is finally, say, now tell me what you really think, this is time.
Well, I was trying to think how many more board sessions I have, because I'm not here next week, I'm going to Boise, so then we have the one, the next week, probably the one after Christmas and then...
Do we get to take the day off, Sam?
What?
Next week?
If she's gone, we might as well, as I was saying. No. No, apparently not.
Think three more, but who's counting?
All right, three more. And then you just disappear.
Because I'm here in January, the first week of January, so that'll be my last board session.
And that's it, and we, never again, you won't, oh, I got asked, it's kinda like that commercial...
I'll have to watch on FaceTime Live.
Yeah, and you'll send comments, because I'll miss that otherwise, I won't know how I stand.
I send comments, nobody answers back to me when I've been on...
I don't know how to do it here.
When I was in Hawaii, I sent you a comment.
I know, but I don't know how to do it here.
It was like, I sent you a comment, I said, "I would support that."
I wish I'd've known, I hope I voted the right way. What was I getting at? Oh, like that commercial about emailing Santa Claus and stuff, I got asked last night if they'd give, if I could give your phone number and email, I said, well, you know, I don't really have it, I don't know if I can, if I feel good about that, so you will stay in touch, and we'll talk about that.
I will stay in touch, and I had a few people there that asked me if they could keep in touch and...
Yeah, I would like to be on that list.
I've been giving them my personal email and my cell phone number, so...
That'd be nice.
Can text me.
I would like to know you're watching and care and correcting from afar.
I'll watch it until I just go, oh, I can't watch it.
Good thing I got out of there, I hear you, okay, I'm done.
Yeah, I'm teasing, so...
Well, it was a busy week last week.
It was.
Alan's retirement, and then interviews for our Public Works Director. That's moving along pretty quickly, I think. Last night was great, really good, Janet, thank you for your service. And then we had the groundbreaking ceremony on Friday, that was the quick one, right? So we could, all were freezing for the juvenile building, so SEDCor, we had the first, I had my first meeting with the executive council with our new director, with Eric Anderson. Today we have our SEDCor quarterly board meeting, so it'll be great for the rest of the board to meet him. You going to Woodburn?
I am.
Are you able to? Because I've got SEDCor.
Yeah, I've gotta take my daughter to the airport, so I will not be able to do that.
I got one, it's kinda bad, but I wanna talk about it. So there was a traffic meeting in Salem, in St. Paul last night, that we couldn't go to.
Right.
And we weren't really notified, or, I mean, nobody tried to coordinate with it.
Right.
But then it was especially bad, and you know how hard, and you and I both worked on, all of us have, excuse me, on traffic, and we know the issues from Newburgh Dundee and the increased use in Donald, and then that they have a horrible accident in that area. I'm kinda hoping to hear from Brian or somebody, I hope somebody from the county got to be there.
Brian went, I think.
And hear about the concerns and causes, and we continue to look for ways to make that better, but it's just, it's just an over, I'd say, overused facility, especially with those impacts coming out of Newburgh, and we gotta keep working on it. You know, I thought, gee, I know we've made big strides, bigger signs, rerouting, realignment, the bumps, and different things to try to slow traffic down, all the things we can, and still isn't enough.
Well, we'll, we'll get an update from him on what happened, and what, what, what the concerns were, and then we'll go forth and schedule, like we talked about at our retreat, schedule that, regular updates up there. Because they just did it without coordinating with us.
Yeah.
So we can't help them. And then he got a call in the last minute, they wanted him to go, so-
Right, exactly.
Sheriff was sending somebody, I think, one of the commanders or lieutenants went up, so-
It kinda, and we're set up, but it makes us look kinda bad, like we don't even care. Well, that's certainly not the case at all, and that's the reason I bring it up.
Well, and that's why I mentioned, too, that that East Salem, when we took weeks to prepare that, made sure we had the right people there, and it was scheduled when they could come and all of that.
Just anybody asking would've said, "Well, that's probably not a good date," because all three of us have an event that's been scheduled for more than a month.
We told Greg Leo that, trust me, we did.
Okay.
Did we not?
Yeah, he said it was, he put it off on the mayor.
He said it was the mayor's fault.
Don't get me started.
Yeah. Yep. And then one other thing that we did last week that we didn't mention is that we created a lighting district in East Salem that will cover the entire area, based on that East Salem Town Hall, where everybody said that's what we want, so that was really, I think,